My name is Julia Deemer.
And my name is Janie Murray. Together we will serve as your NCT's committee. At this time, we ask that all the folks in the audience turn off any electronic devices.
Okay, and tonight's forum is co-sponsored by the West Branch Times and the Brick Arch Watering.
The West Branch Times organized the forum, solicited ideas for questions from a variety of people, gathered input, and sought out volunteers to serve on the question committee as a moderator and board.
The Brick Arch Watering, of course, is providing the backdrop for the event and is supplying refreshments for the evening's activities. To accommodate the students' involvement, watering owners John McNutt and Isling Landy agreed to go dry and serve only non-alcoholic drinks tonight. Thank you, John and Isling.
Special thanks goes out to Nick Schimmern, who brought the West Branch Community Access WBCATV, Channel 5 camera equipment, and helped set it up and Bill Cohn for operating the cameras tonight.
We'd also like to thank the West Branch High School staff, Claire Keeney, Doug Cummings, and Amanda Hughes for helping us find students to help with tonight's forum, giving those students some hands-on experience in the election process.
We also want to thank the members of our question committee: felicitator Mike Owen, members Sally Peck, Julie Bridges, Kevin Hapule, and Wayne Ronhold.
There are five people running for the PC's in the West Branch City Council. Incompet Jim Oakes of the West Branch City Council, members Dick Stulman and Mary Beth Stevenson, and challenger Gloria Johnson. We wish to thank the candidates for coming today and participating in this forum. We hope that their answers will educate us as the voters decide whom they wish to have represent them on the council.
To begin, each candidate is invited to spend up to two minutes talking about why they want to serve on the city council. After that, we begin with questions created by the question committee.
Members of the audience are invited to share ideas for questions, which the question committee will also consider. You'll find pens and paper on table two at left.
Each candidate will have two minutes to answer each question. Once each candidate has had their turn, they may have an extra minute to respond to something said by the other candidates. We ask that the candidates keep their responses, focus on ideas and issues, and that they respond by speaking to the audience rather than their opponents. Ms. Deemer will use cards to alert the candidates when they are down to their last thirty seconds, fifteen seconds, and then when time runs out.
We'll also rotate who goes first, so question number one will go to the candidate seated on the far left, and question number two will go to the candidate seated on left, and so on.
We anticipate wrapping up between 8:30 and 9:00 p.m. And now, let's begin.
Okay, can you all hear me on this side?
I just tried to switch.
Nope. Nope. Just need to be a little closer. All right. Testing, testing. Okay, so we're gonna start out with the introductory questions, so you may lead first. You have two minutes to tell us who you are and why you're running.
My name's Corey Kessler. I'm running for city council. As a member of the community, I was born and raised here. And the experiences that I grew, that I got growing up in small town, has developed me as a person to who I am today. Some of those benefits of growing up in a small town is the hard work attitude, the personal levels of relationships, and dealing with people on one-to-one basis. With that, I want to bring my leadership skills and my strong business sense to, back to the community and help facilitate growth opportunities and working with the citizens for the betterment of our community.
My name is Tim Oaks. I'm running for my second term on the West Branch City Council. I've lived in West Branch for over fifty years. I was employed by the city for thirty years, so I have a good working knowledge of what it takes to run a city. And I just feel that we didn't, I didn't get enough accomplishment first term, so I'm gonna take a chance and run for my second term in hopes that we can put things together and maybe have a better working relationship with other members of the council and the rest of, and the rest of the community.
My name is Tim Shields. I am running for council this year because, well, I've lived here now for nine years. I have young children in the community. I have served on the Parks and Rec Board now for two years. And I just really think the town deserves the opportunity to grow and, you know, invite other people, families into our community, bring more revenue into the community. I think we have great small businesses here, and I would really like to see more come in as well as the ones here continue to strive and, you know, just really, really try to, really want to see things for the kids. I want to see a lot more opportunities for our youth in this community. You know, there's been a lot of talk about the community center, and I really think that's gonna be a really, really big, nice issue and a nice addition to the community. And I feel like if I can be on the council here, I will have more opportunities to make these things happen.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name's Mary Beth Stevenson, and also I'm running for city council, as you know. And I've been living in West Branch for a little over three years now, but I did also grow up in a small town. And so I'm really interested in kind of the small-town life, you know, just the case of life, the people, community values, all of that is really important to me. And, you know, above all, I'm really interested in seeing West Branch grow and develop as a community that attracts families and retains folks here in town. Really interested in seeing how we can support our local businesses to help them thrive and succeed. And again, just as been mentioned, really seeing how we can improve the quality of life for everyone who lives here in West Branch, providing opportunities for kids, you know, folks of all ages, and just really looking at how I can sort of be a partner to those in the community to convey ideas and opinions back to our city government and kind of be a conduit for that.
Hello, my name is Dick Stulman. I've lived here for fifty-seven years. I've seen a lot of different things happen in those fifty-seven years. The interstate was built, new school buildings were built. The city just keeps progressing, and this is what we need to see and work on. Keep pushing forward, get more athletic fields, get more places for the kids to play. We also, I raised four kids, that's why I know what it's like to go through sports in all those years, traveling all over. You go out there and you rake the diamonds to make sure that they can play that night, and you do a lot of things extra. I also worked with Jim Wheeler to get the Booster Club started back up, and he and I got that done, and it's progressing very good now. There's a lot of projects that are gonna be coming up for the city of West Branch. And we gotta watch how we do these. We've already got a lot of debt, and we need to control that a little bit, make sure that we can afford what we're doing. Our young kids will have to pay for that in the future. We've kept taxes down for the last few years, and that probably helps. And the downtown has really developed now, so we need to help that get better and better. And the national park is a real thing to help this community go better.
Okay, the first question is gonna go to Jim Oaks. "How would you use your role as a councilperson to demonstrate leadership in the community, and how would you build consensus?" Yes. "How would you use your role as a councilperson to demonstrate leadership in the community and build consensus?"
I'm not sure that I would really hear it.
Okay, that's fine.
The PA system doesn't really do much, so I just have a blurry.
"As a councilperson, how would you demonstrate your leadership, and how would you go about building a consensus?"
Well, one of the things that I've kind of pride myself on is I listen to what my constituents have to say. If we have a problem that arises, and I receive calls, I always answer my phone. I never pass up a chance to visit with a constituent at the grocery store, on the street, at the park, wherever. So, I like to thank the, my constituents can always knock on my door, call my telephone, send me an email, whatever, and I'm anxious to hear what they have to say.
I'd say, you know, a lot like Jim just said, I think a big, big way that I would basically acquire the people's opinions is, you know, invite them to contact me personally, you know, and then use my, you know, the fact that I'm not born here, born and raised, I think I really bring an unbiased opinion, so I'm very open-minded to anybody's suggestions and ideas. So, I feel that I'm very approachable, and in that sense, that I would like the people just to come to me, and I will ask them, you know, different peoples in the community, different business owners in the community, for their opinions, and then, you know, apply that and, you know, go to bat for that, for the community at our meetings for different projects. I think that's probably the best way that I would handle it, and just really put myself out there to know that, don't be afraid to come up and ask me or give me your opinion, because I do value your opinion, because it is, the small community is our community. It's not just the city council's community. So, I think that's how I would provide that service.
So, definitely, again, agree with what has been said already, and I guess just really want to emphasize that I think good leadership on an elected official position like this, good leadership is really, listening is essential to that. You have to listen to people, and not just your constituents, but, you know, the folks that are on city staff, the people that you're serving with. I just think it's really important to have something of a cooperative approach, you know. I think we're in a small town, we need to work together. It's really important to try to understand differences and try to determine how we can work together to make things happen. I think that's really important. I think if you take a very, you know, it doesn't serve any good to be defensive. You really need to just take that collaborative working approach. And that's really kind of how I would try to lead within the city council, and also how I would try to build consensus within the city council as well.
Yeah, there's been some good comments, but the rest of them, we need to get more people involved in groups and stuff, and discuss things, and work towards different things. Two or three can't do it, it takes quite a view. There's all these projects to do in this town. I think that, what, they're gonna sweep the street tomorrow morning, or was that today? I don't know, I see in the paper, but that's something that everybody can jump on and do. We've gotten Main Street fixed up pretty nice, and we need to keep it that way. The school is working very nice right now. I'm proud of what the school board and the superintendent are doing. They're fulfilling some big wishes, and this also makes our kids a top-notch place to go to school. And this will draw more people into this town, and we have the good school, the good teachers, things like that. We've got a new water tower, we've got a new lift station that's supposed to go into effect next week, I think. There's big debt there, but those two items are fixed now, so we shouldn't have to worry about that expense for a while. And we're moving forward, and we need some more businesses. We've got some buildings that are empty yet, and we need to get those filled, get products moving out of those, so.
So, with demonstrating leadership, at my current position, I'm a manager, I manage sixteen employees. It's my job every day to lead them, and I have sixteen employees that want to work with me because I have an open-door policy. And the fact that if you have a problem and issue, I'm always willing to listen and help understand where they're coming from, what my experiences have been, and help solve the problem. The benefit of me growing up in a town, I know a lot of the older generations, and they can relate just because I've grown up with them. They've taught me life lessons that, that's something you can't take for granted. And with a young child in the school system, I'm also active in coaching, and being a member of the community, I'm always out. You know, my family's eating in town, we're buying our gas in town, we're shopping in town. And that's how I build consensus, is just having an open-door policy and the fact that I'll be available anytime, just like my job. My phone rings in the middle of the night, I answer it. If there's an issue, call me. One thing that I'd like to do to help make it easier on the community to get in touch with me would be to set a certain time during the week, whether it's Monday night, Wednesday night, Friday, whenever I'd set a dedicated time that I'd be in the council chambers from, you know, six to seven, seven to eight, eight to nine, and have that open door. If I'll be there, if you guys have any issues, come talk to me. That's the best way. If there's an issue, you know, an idea, bring it to me, and I'll go, you know, I'll go to bat for the community and just use my, my relationships and my leadership to help the community.
Okay, Mr. Shields, you have the next question. We're gonna start moving into questions with a little bit more meaty than that. "What is your view of library expansion? Is it necessary to expand? And if you do believe it's necessary to expand, how should it expand?"
Um, the library expansion, I do think it's, I would like to see it expand a little bit. I've been in there, my kids use the library programs regularly, and I think they're great programs. It is a little, it's small, and it, I mean, it's, even though it is a newer building, it's getting a little dated. I certainly would love to see it expand. I think the community, the council, the library, and the school, I think we could all really get a nice working relationship. There's property there, I think if we could open up those lines of communication, again, with the school, with the library. There's land there, I know that the bus barns are there, but I think there's, there's ways that maybe we could work together, move the bus barns, expand the library to where those are. With the buses being there, and the library, and the school, I always, there's always that little fear of some, a child walking from the library to the school with a lot of traffic. Those buses are big, they're difficult to see around, kids are small, so, you know, I think there's a safety issue there as well. And again, I think if we work together, we could expand it, I think, with, with all the, all parties involved, like I said, the school, the library. And, and, you know, I just, I really think it's a good program, and there's so many other programs for the libraries, you know, nationwide, that I think West Branch would be, would be able to facilitate and really thrive and see our children grow by expanding the library.
Yes, I wholeheartedly agree with that. I definitely think a library expansion is critical. I think that libraries provide so much for our communities. We, you know, we're library supporters in our family, and I've just been extremely impressed by the quality of staff at the library, just the programs they offer. Kids are really into it, when we've gone to the activities for kids, just really feel very strongly that that's something that's important for our community. Now, when the library was going through the visioning process, it really was very clear that the community was also in support of expanding and enhancing the library. And interestingly, the way the, the kind of workshops and sessions went, people really wanted to see the library expand in their current location. I mean, the, the community built the library not so long ago, it's, it's in a really great location, close to downtown, and I, I was just very interested to see that there really was this overwhelming support for staying in that location. And I know there are some things that need to get worked out with the school board, and I'm very hopeful that those issues can be worked out, and that we can come to some consensus and really find an approach that works both for the community, who clearly really wants this project to happen, and something that also benefits the schools as well. I think the, there's such a natural partnership that is, is, that can grow between a school and a library, there's just, it's a win-win solution for everyone. Now, I've also kind of heard that the debt is a little bit of an issue, but I really believe we're at thirty percent of our statutory debt limit in West Branch. That's really, we can go a little bit more. I don't think we have to worry about our debt right now, we need to invest, and we will have a very strong return on investment if we can really, and make this happen, so.
Yeah, Nick does a wonderful job of running that library, and his staff's very good too. I'd like to, it should have been built bigger one from the start, they should have put the basement in, everybody prostrum constantly trying to talk them into doing that. Still possible by going from where the building is now, putting a basement in there, out to the sidewalk in front, and go, have them two stories with an elevator or something in it. Financing-wise, there's possibilities, a fire station will be done here next year, they could use that one cent option tax to finance that library addition or increase the size on it. Kids all have computers anymore, so they use that up there a lot to get some stuff with their computers. I don't know if the bus barns could be, the old one could be tore down, and that one, another one built there, big enough, or what, but there's room. They're gonna have to make more parking if they do build on there, some more room for the kids to make a, just a certain sidewalk. Those buses parked there during the day is kind of a dangerous situation there too, kids going over there and playing outside and running behind the buses, I've seen this before, and so, let's see if we can't get something done.
My view on the library expansion is, it's an investment in our future. The majority of the time that I'm there is after school, during the weekend, I see a lot of kids, and that's the benefit of having a library, and the fact that it's an investment. We have to look for a future, but not only do I see the kids, I see adults using it too. One of the best parts that I've witnessed at the library is, one of the library staff was helping an older generation citizen use an iPad. They were struggling with how to connect, what, how to get through the iPad, and it was just a great thing. So, as far as expansion, yeah, if we can do it smart, I see benefit in it. It's just, how do we go about doing it? You know, it would have to be, if it's in its current location, we have to work with the school, and help them, help us, and really focus in on how to do it with a budget conscious, and make it right for both the city and the school.
I'm glad that the library expansion has gone in the, in the direction that it has. The meetings that I attended, the majority of the people thought the expansion should take place at the present site, which I agree with. I'm hoping that the library can expand to the north and maybe not disrupt the school bus barn at the same time, but, but yeah, add enough square footage that we won't have to worry about expansion again for a number of years, and possibly add double or triple the parking that we have there now, so that when, when the need arises, we have plenty of parking. And I like, I like the location of the library, I've liked it ever since they, it was located there. I think its proximity to the school is very important. It allows the students to use the library, especially after school, so I hope that when we get right down to putting everything together, that we can expand right there and continue to offer the good service that the library does now.
Okay, the next question will start off with Mary Beth. "Are you satisfied with the industrial park TIF program, or would you modify it?"
Well, clearly, the TIF issue is, is pretty heated right now. What I will say is, I advocate a very cautious approach to the use of TIF, Tax Improvement Financing, in West Branch. I think it is a tool that can be used for community development, but I do think that it's something that we need to take very cautiously. You know, I think we need to really kind of think about the original intent of, of TIF, which was to encourage development in underutilized areas. And I think that, you know, whatever we do, we need to just be sure that we're kind of sticking with that. And, you know, I think, I will think very carefully about any, you know, projects or programs that we consider through TIF. I just, I want to make sure that it's not negatively benefiting the community in any way, and I also want to make sure that we're being very fair to our community in terms of not just giving handouts to, to corporations that, that may not need it. That said, I really think that we need to encourage growth and development in West Branch. So, it's, it's an issue, you know, that is very polarizing, but I think that it's, it's just really important to take a very level-headed approach and talk to the community, kind of see where people are at. So, that's, that's generally the approach that we'll take.
Yeah, I was on plan some, when they start this TIF program, they're back quite a few years ago. I think P&amp;G's getting pretty close to being off of that, and some of the other ones are, so there's not that big a TIF program out there right now. And I think we ought to watch what we do from now on. That industrial park is going up pretty fast, and if we can get by, but not given that tax improvement financing, we'd be better off, because we got plenty of projects right here in town that we need to get done without that. And I think, well, Caterpillar isn't asking for it, and so, Axiona, we chopped theirs off, so that one's gone. So, the school ought to be getting some more money now, as well as the town and the rural people, so we need to watch it and control it a little better than we did before.
Yeah, definitely, in the future, I'd like to see it be controlled, monitored, like Dick said. It seems that we've got in P&amp;G, Axiona, where they came in, provided the employment for several people in our community. However, you know, with Axiona, the wind turbine energy, it's not booming like it used to, so now, we have basically, from what I've heard, ten employees up there, and we gave them the TIF, and now, we cut it off. How does that look in the future for people to come in as, as a city saying, hey, we want to work with you, we want to work with you, and then to cut the TIF off and say, you know what, we're done, we want it back? How are we gonna promote future businesses coming in if that's our approach? We have to have a good working relationship with the business, with the business owner. We have to have a good working relationship with the business, with the business owners, to ensure it's a benefit for not only them, but us. I think West Branch provides, you know, a great employment workforce, and we're not necessarily keeping the employment numbers in town as high as I'd like. What I see is a lot of people coming in on Highway Six, getting off the interstate, going out to P and G. That's really hard for me to see because we're not keeping the jobs local. And here, the city's turning around and giving them the TIF, but they're not keeping that workforce in town. And that's disappointing to see. So when we're negotiating and we're discussing, I'd like a long-term plan of what their future is. Is it just a booming concept in the country? Like wind, solar, geo, whatever the thing is, we need to have a long-term plan and work with them in the future to ensure the future of the city.
I've always taken kind of a cautious approach to TIF. Anybody that's lived in West Branch for any length of time can look back and see that our industrial-type economic development's been kind of a rocky road. We think we've landed the big one, and then all of a sudden, they're leaving, they're closing their doors, and they're promising a big workforce. And it's really a skeleton force. So my approach has been on the cautious side. I've never been in favor of using TIF for anything but industrial-type economic development. And I think as some of these TIF debts are retired, that we ought to take a real cautious look whether we return to that. I'm not sure that our industrial park in the future, a lot of it's taken up by just warehousing. I'd like to see some other businesses similar to, well, maybe not similar to Altorport, but those that employ twenty people and they come in and they don't even ask for TIF. They just come in and want to be part of our town, they like our location, and so. My look at TIF is taking a cautious approach.
When it comes to TIF, I actually just started doing more research on what TIF is and what its best uses are. I like the board, I mean, like everybody up here. I think you definitely have to take a cautious approach to it. To me, in a nutshell, the way I see TIF is TIF is basically you're gambling. You're basically, you're taking a gamble, and you're gambling on something that you hope to bring return into your community. So yes, I think TIF is a good thing. However, I truly believe it needs to be researched. When a business asks to use TIF dollars, I think we as a community need to come together and really decide, "Hey, is this the best way, is this the best company to use this kind of money on"? Because, you know, essentially, it is our future. And I think, you know, we, and I think I do maybe some types of forums, more open discussion when it comes to these types of issues, especially when it involves this type of money. So yeah, I think TIF is good if it's researched and it's well thought out and, you know, and it's, and we really investigate it and perceive the cautious.
Can you actually use my one minute? I just, I want to add a little bit regarding the Axionna discussion. And I also want to mention that Altorport did actually approach the city about asking for a TIF, and they were actually told no. So that conversation did happen, it just, it didn't proceed in their favor. But with Axionna, you know, they didn't hold up their ends of the bargain. They were required to have one hundred and ten jobs within the city, and they didn't maintain that. But not only did they not keep those jobs, they also didn't keep the lines of communication open with the city of West Branch. They were a very strong community partner at one time. I mean, they, my understanding, I wasn't here at the time, my understanding is that they did a lot. They were very active, they talked to city staff quite frequently. But that communication just totally fell apart, and they did nothing to say, you know, "We really want to do our best to kind of get those jobs back". We really didn't have any indication of that kind of good faith effort coming from Axionna. So I think that really kind of added to the decision of West Branch to, to cut off that agreement. All I wanted to add is to clarify a little bit.
Does anybody else want a one-minute rebuttal on that? The next question goes to Dick. Are you in favor of a West Branch Community Center? And if you are, what do you envision being in that community center?
Yes, I'm in favor of a West Branch Community Center. Senior citizens don't have a place to go play cards or exercise and do different things. And also, the kids need some more play areas where they could, in the wintertime or summertime, they could be inside doing different things. Get more, better in sports if they have more places to exercise and try to do different things. We don't really have a place big enough for a wedding, a big wedding or anything like that. We need that for this community. We just need a community center. I'm sure it's going to cost a lot of money, but it's something we're gonna have to hold the bell on and go do it. If we can bond for other things, we can bond for that, too. So that's my opinion. Let's help get it done.
Coming from an active family, I'm all for rec center. I think that's one thing that we lack. My previous location was Ames, Iowa. And you can go to about one in seven places where you can get exercise, play basketball, walk in the track, workout, and they were all city or school-funded buildings. So I'm all for a community center. I think it's a great idea. I think it'll promote future growth. It'll be a positive for the community to bring new, younger families in as a benefit. Inside, you know, I'd like to see indoor basketball, an indoor track, so. And then outdoor would be ball diamonds, baseball, softball. I'd also like to see a reception hall or a community area where the community can gather, whether it be wedding receptions, graduation parties, retirements, whatever we can do to provide a facility that brings the community together. With that, I'd like to build it where we can expand. Right now, we might not necessarily have the funds to do everything we want, but if we build for the future and construct it in phases down long-term, we can get what we want. And it'll benefit everybody within the community. There's a lot of talk about a pool. If we build it and we get revenue generated through our community center, when it's making money and it's self-efficient, we could look at a pool. Other small towns around us have pools. It would be a great part of it. Back in the nineties, my days were spent at the golf course with the pool. And everybody was out there, all the families, kids. And it was a great experience for the community, and I think we could bring that to, back to the city.
I think a community center is a great asset to shoot for, for our community. I think that it's important that we explore, you know, all the financing options that we can so that we can build as much of it in the first phase as we possibly can afford so that we can begin to phase in the use of it so that the whole community can benefit by it. I just think that, you know, we've talked about this community center, rec center, however you want to pronounce it, for a number of years. And I think the main holdup on the whole thing is strictly in the financing. So I think the thing that we need to explore more than anything are the grants that are available to help us build it, any of the other aspects of financing that we need to nail down before we get started on this construction. And I agree with Cory that we need to set this building up so that if we can only afford to build a third of it at the beginning, then it just falls into place to put the second third and the final third into place. So I think that it's going to take a lot of planning. It's going to take a lot of financed options. But I think as a community, if we pull together, we can make it work.
Yeah, I too, in full favor of a community center. I think in order for West Branch to grow, I think a community center is very, almost essential. What it, it opens up so many more opportunities for our community, for our kids. It makes West Branch a more inviting community. Speaking, you know, as Cory mentioned about ball diamonds and fields, I think it would be great. You know, as being on the park and rec department right now, I know that we don't have enough space for our youth sports. We really don't. It seems like we have a lot of different parks. But, you know, when it comes to youth basketball, I mean, we just started to cave through to youth basketball. Two years ago, I started it. But every Friday night for four weeks, I lugged in my own personal basketball hoops into the hall purpose room because we didn't have gym space. So every Friday night, I would go in there and I'd break them all up, and then I'd bring them, you know, break them down on Saturday morning after we were done. You know, that gym would be great because then we can use that. You know, yes, we do have a lot of gym space, but we have a lot of activities in the winter with our high school and school sporting, you know, sporting events. So we don't always have the opportunity to use all the gym space for our youth, our youth of the community. Yes, a track, I think that would be great. I think we could really, everybody in the community could utilize a track, you know. At all ages, we can get programs. You know, we all, we need to stay in shape, we want to stay in shape, but it gets cold in Iowa. So, you know, going outside is, it gets a little, it's kind of tough. And yeah, reception hall. I just, I really think the community, it would bring, bring in a lot of revenue also when you think that maybe we could host some tournament plays, a softball, baseball. That's going to bring other towns, other teams to come into our community, use our community, go eat at Herb and Lou's or buy snacks at the gas station. So yeah, I think it would be a great asset.
Yeah, I am completely in agreement. I am very much in favor of a community center in West Branch. And I would definitely echo what I'm hearing, that it's not just a recreation center, but it's also a community center. You know, providing facilities, you know, space for community people to have meetings, you know, any type of events that we might want to offer, and really kind of offering a very diverse program offering. I think a pool is important. I've heard that from a lot of people, that if you're going to have a recreation center, a pool is pretty essential, so I would be in favor of that. And, you know, overall, I would just look at the benefit that such a community center would bring to West Branch, just in term of, in terms of really helping to strengthen our economic backbone. I mean, we're really, we're losing a lot of money to Iowa City and surrounding areas in terms of, you know, programs, people going to other places for programs. And so I'd like to have that kept here in the town of West Branch. And I think we would really see a high return on investment if we did, if we did supply that to our residents and help to enhance quality of life, which is a really important thing for attracting the communities, retaining those who are already here.
This goes back to Cory.
Okay.
Cory, long ago, before I had gray hairs, the city of West Branch had Economic Development Commission, and they also had a Chamber of Commerce. Today, we're operating under West Branch Main Street. What we want to know is, what do you think the city's role should be when working with West Branch Main Street? Should they be funded, or should they be self-sufficient? Where do you see the city's role in that?
The city's role should be a partner in that. And the fact that the chamber, city, city chamber, Chamber of Commerce, that is essential in helping explore avenues to where, what businesses are out there. How do we not only bring new businesses in, but how do we work together with the businesses that we already have? It's just another means of communication with, through the city, to the city, with the West Downtown Main Street group. So the city, I wouldn't necessarily say it would be funded, but I would like to see relationship, partnership, work with them to help facilitate future growth and future benefit for the businesses that are out here.
About four years on the city council, I think we've had, I was term an outstanding relationship with Main Street. I think they've done so many good things for our downtown I can't help but think that we've got such a good deal going with Main Street that I, in fact, not for any changes. I just like the way things are going. I know we have an interim person that's leading us right now. And we had a person before that that was really an avid leader of the downtown group. So I really think that our Main Street people have done us an outstanding job. And I really don't think, I've always been one that doesn't like to spend money fixing something that isn't broke. So I just, I think we should continue on the same path.
I think Main Street is a great program for West Branch. They do a lot, a lot of things with the community to involve the community. I like that they already, the city council and Main Street already work very well together. I know, being on the Parks Commission currently, that, you know, we've always tried to work with McKenzie and Main Street. And they, they're very, they're very open to doing things as a group. And I think if we can just continue to keep the relationship very open and work to build each other, you know, don't compete, just work to build each other. And I don't know that necessarily the city should be, you know, should necessarily be funding. However, I don't see any reason why we can't help, help them get their own funding. So I think if we just continue to work with them, that would be, that would be another good asset for the, for the community to continue what it's already, it's already going on with it, so.
Well, just kind of reiterating how strong of a partner I think Main Street West Branch is. I mean, Main Street is the face of West Branch. You come into West Branch, you see the downtown area. That's, that's a really important, you know, kind of best foot forward. And, you know, as such, I think that our partnership with Main Street West Branch is extremely important. Now, I'll be honest, I have never really thought about what it might look like to fund Main Street West Branch, but that doesn't mean I would necessarily be against it at all. I would really like to think about what that could mean. I think they do so much now to support the city. What could they potentially do with a little bit more? You know, I think I would definitely be interested in kind of hearing a little bit more about what other communities do to support their downtown organizations and maybe hearing from other communities what the pros and cons are of providing that kind of support, if that kind of support is, if that happens in other places. So I guess I don't want to necessarily say one way or the other without kind of having a better understanding of what that cooperative relationship could look like. But I really think it's important for us to, to support that organization as much as possible. I think that, you know, downtown looks great right now. They've done a lot, and they're a great partner. So I'd like to see how better we can support that.
Yeah, since downtown group has started up, the downtown area's really started to shape up. It looks a lot better. There's a lot of projects are gonna, sidewalks are all going to be replaced again. And they need a few more streetlights. The building, the wall was ready to fall out, it's being fixed. Main Street's gonna try to help and get a grant. The gas station has been cleaned up. It looks a lot better. They're doing a lot of projects and helping people get financed. Museum over here, they got some money, it's being fixed up. The buildings are starting to shape up. We need to get something in the Hoover House. Spent a lot of money there, and that's just sitting there empty. We need to get something going in there. This man that owns this, that's sitting over there, he spent a lot of money to put this here and it's a major improvement to the community. He needs to be pat on the back several times for doing it. We wouldn't have a place like this that have these type of things, it wasn't for him. Let's tell the people when you go in their business places, we like what's happening in our town. We need to help you as we can. So keep looking around and helping.
All right, this next question goes to Jim. Jim, what do you see as the most pressing needs for the city right now? In other words, what keeps you up at night?
Well, I think one of the things that the city, and I have not criticized, I think the city's done a good job in the past, but I think the biggest job the city has is to stay up with the growth. You know, as housing developments take place and the homes are added and citizens come to our town, then the infrastructure has to be brought up to date, you know, water mains, sewer expansions. Then you have to expand the waste treatment plant, water plant. And Public Works has to add equipment to stay up with their needs. So I think you have to look a little bit farther than day after tomorrow. You have to look down the road a decade ahead and see where we're heading. And some of this equipment stuff that looks high priced today is going to be much more high priced a decade from now. So I think budgeting items have to be put in place long before you actually need them and the money has to be saved. Kind of typically like the fire department does their budgets, they look down the road 10, 15 years and they know what piece of equipment needs to be replaced. And I think, I think that's a good approach. And as the city continues to grow, we've got to stay up with the growth. So we don't end up kind of in the, in the shadows of North Liberty where they've outgrown everything in a hurry.
You know, I think the city, the city is doing very well now. I really think a community center, I think that would be just a really, really big, a nice addition. And I really truly think it can bring in some nice revenue to really offset our budgets. I think budgets is something that you always have to, you know, you always have to look at. You have to be, you know, you gotta be cautious, you gotta make sure we're not going to, you know, run ourselves into the ground. You know, and I also would like to see maybe some, some commissions, other committees formed so that more of the community is involved in the decision-making when it comes to city council and different items. I've spoken to other people that have lived too long to be in, they're used to be different commissions. And I think that that might be something that we could possibly bring back and it would bring, again, it would get more of the community involved and really feel like that everybody does have a say. You know, it's not just the five people that are voting at the committee, you know, at the council meetings. You know, everybody does, should have a say. This is our community. It's not one person or this person or that person. It's our town. So you know, it may be a lot, it probably going to be more work, but I think this community, the way I, I love, I love the community and the way that I see the people come together and when, you know, when things get tough, we all somehow find a way to come together and get things done. So those are, you know, those are a couple of my concerns, but again, I think we can really get the, get the community more involved.
To me, what keeps me up at night is how best we can continue to enhance the quality of life for, for people in West Branch. To me, it all comes back to that. You know, if we want to be happy, you know, we've chosen to live in a small town because we, we just like the taste of life. We like the people, we like the amenities. And I think we can, we're definitely on a good path. And I think that we can, you know, go a little bit further with that. I would say that sidewalks is a really important issue in the city of West Branch right now. I would say I'm really happy that the city is applying again for some funding to help support sidewalk improvements. And I think it's really important to me to see the city continue with this kind of phased approach to sidewalk improvements. I think we need to commit every year to identifying which sidewalks we want to have enhanced in the community. And we need to make that happen. We need to commit funding to that on an annual basis. The sidewalks, they need to be ADA compliant, they need to be safe. It's, it's a big issue for our community right now. And in fact, I got a letter from, from someone recently who was very upset because they'd fallen, they'd injured themselves on a sidewalk that wasn't ADA compliant. And it's something we really need to be thinking about if we want to enhance our downtown and our community as best as possible. I also think that those issues related to sustainability are really important. We're a flood impacted community. We need to be thinking about how we're going to be managing stormwater very sustainably, especially with new growth coming into the town. We need to make sure we can handle that and that we're not kind of further affecting things in a negative way, just as far as Hoover Creek and West Branch, Axionna Creek. We need to make, those are really important resources in the city and we need to make sure that we're taking care of them. So those are, that's about it.
She's covered a lot of different areas that I was thinking about. As we know, right now, we have a contractor that is cleaning the creek out that runs into the Hoover Park, which is a big improvement, cutting trees and weeds and crap out. Mostly, there's supposed to be a sidewalk project up here by the gazebo yet this year. Then all the way down in front of the restaurant there to make better walking for people to come to town. I always thought that this town needed a horse and a buggy or something. All the people from the Hoover Park up here that toured uptown. I mean, you go to some of these other states, they have those sort of things. And that's a way to get to people up here that buy and spend money. We'd have to find somebody to clean the streets. The town is working, it's starting to get better all the time. I've sat here for over 50 years. I've seen the different things that have happened. And I married a local girl here, came from the western part of the state, I did, and ran the newspaper for a while. And I went into construction and we built a lot of this different things in town. I need to see those start up again and get going.
One of the common themes that you hear tonight is growth. We want the city to grow. We want to get families here. One of the pressing needs that I see is balancing growth and taking care of the existing infrastructure and doing it within a budget. When, like Mary Beth said, have a, have certain dollar amounts budgeted in for projects that take care of the existing infrastructure that we have, to get the sidewalks up to ADA compliant, get to a point where everyone can get from point A to point B in a safe way. That's what we all want. And if the council, the city and administrative staff, if they see the future and budget for the future, there's no reason that we can't have, have that. So also with that, planning for the future, getting the sewers up to date, getting the runoff situations taken care of and really looking not only where the next growth is, but future growth down the road. How are the current things that we're doing affecting future growth? So not only do we have to look at a 10-year plan, but a 50-year plan. And that would be a pressing need that I just see everyone looking 10 years. I don't see any 50-year to 100-year where some younger families are looking. You know, I plan to retire here and stay here. And so I don't want the decisions that we make today, we have to go through in 20 years because all we're looking at is a 10-year plan.
This goes to Mr. Shields. Just this year, the state legislature has enacted some property tax reductions to the tune of about 10%. So my question to you is, what are you prepared to cut to make up for that?
Well, wow, that's, you know, you really got to look at the whole scheme of things. And I, and I think, you know, I sat in on a goal-setting meeting that the council members had a few months ago, weeks ago. You know, and I think what you do is you just kind of, the best way to determine what gets cut is go from maybe in a voted way. And you take your, your goals that you have set for the next year. And maybe the one that's got you the least amount of votes, maybe let's start to cut, trim a little bit off that one and go in that order. As opposed to trying to take, because I, I feel like with that goal-setting, you want, there's a top priority and you want to get that, that goal accomplished. That's a big thing. So let's not take away from that part. Let's come from the back and go forward. So I feel like that would be the best, best way to approach that. To, to figure out where to cut is maybe just go from the back end and then work your way up. And, and then, you know, the next year, then you redo your goal-setting and go from there.
My turn, huh? Yeah, where to cut, that's, that's a tough question. Well, I think the fact that we, we have kind of cut off the agreement with Axionna, we are going to see some improvement in budget there. And I'll be honest, I don't know where we should cut. I mean, that's a really hard question to answer. I, I need to look at the budget. I need to think about it. I really cannot say right now, honestly, where I think we are going to be cutting our budget next year. It's, it's going to be a hard decision. We're going to have to talk to city staff. We're going to have to just think about what kind of revenues we foresee coming in to kind of offset that. And again, that's why I really think we need to be thinking about how we can strengthen our economic base by investing in what we can here in the community. I think that right now, we are at a really comfortable tax rate in terms of property taxes here. When you compare it to what we've got compared to other cities in the area, I, I think that we're at a pretty comfortable rate now. I know that it hurts, it hurts every year when you have to pay your taxes. It obviously does. If you're a commercial business, if you're a homeowner, it doesn't matter. It does hurt. And I appreciate that. But you know, I think it's just, we're going to have to just do some hard thinking. And that, that would be my approach, is to just listen to staff and, and try to just go from there.
Cutting the budget, it's going to be a tough situation. We are lucky that we've cut a quarter million dollars off from Axionna. But we don't get all that. The school gets half of that or better. But that will help us and there's some more tax coming back up there. I think P and G is about done up there if I remember right. So that will help also. I don't want to raise taxes. We don't have to. Try to make it work the way it is. And some of the projects have to be worked over several years. That's where we'll have to do it. Maybe the legislature will change their mind in another year or two and add it back on. I doubt it. I don't know how other revenue, we don't have a casino in this county, so we can't get any money from there. Have to find another way, find some way, grants, things like that. We're going to need a full-time grant right before the next few years are over. And because a lot of things are going to have to be done by grandkids, so.
In order for me to make a knowledgeable concept and put it forward, I'd really have to understand what our city budget is. If we get down to the nuts and bolts, then we can start to discuss areas where we can cut. And right now, I don't know. I'd have to really look at our, our budget and then figure that out. And for me to make an informed decision, that's what I'd have to do. Looking at from the outside in, without a budget, one thing that I would like to see is private contracting. We have city employees that are doing projects that can be in a competitive bid situation. Everybody knows what the economy is right now and the private contractors are ultra-competitive to keep not only their businesses going, but their employees. So I think that would be an area that we could look at, having outside contractors doing the work versus our own internal employees.
Now, Jim, you're the only one up here that's actually done four of these city budgets, so you don't get a pass on this. Tell us what you're going to cut.
Well, I think with some careful planning, the fact that we have our tax abatements beginning to expire and some of our industrial development areas are going to be brought up to speed, using one to offset the other, I think with a little careful planning that we can still strive forward with our projects and maybe, might have to be a little more thrifty. But I think that as the legislature enacts this property tax relief, and we can offset some of it with the fact that these industrial people are going to be paying a little bit more every year, even though they're going to be involved in some of the tax relief. But I'm not worried from a counselor's standpoint that, that we can't accomplish the task. I think all it's going to take is some careful planning.
Okay, the next question goes to Mary Beth. Is IA-80 a blessing or a curse? And if you do see it as a blessing, what do we do to capitalize on it?
Well, I will tell you, I hear IA-80 very clearly from my house. So from that perspective, I don't love that. I'll be honest. Well, I think that it's really important to kind of bring money in where we can in West Branch. We have an industrial area. That industrial area, in my opinion, is, is where we want to try to generate our revenues tax-wise. And I think that actually makes it a really good location, you know, having IA-80 right there, having it be a stopping off place for people. The, having the gas stations there really can be sort of an attractor, an attractive point for people when they stop off. So you gotta kind of just make the best of what you have, I think. That's important. So I think we really should take advantage of the opportunity that we have in, in front of us, so.
Well, I hear IA-80's been a headache with all the fires and the wrecks. But if we didn't have that here, this town would be pretty slow and practically dead. I think P and G wouldn't be here, any of that industrial park probably wouldn't be here. We've got Casey's is going to build there this winter or next spring. So that's another source of income and taxes for the school and us both. There's going to be some other, we have a natural gas, gas station coming in to fill semis with natural gas. They're going to start operating on that. So that's going to give us more revenue. Some of those lots up there in the hill are starting to sell pretty fast. And the Dodge, new Dodge dealer, he's expanding bigger. And so there's going to be some income up, up there. But there could be some income down here too, as we get some things going. I mean, the housing is really helping. There's some really nice homes being built in the new places. And those tax dollars is going to help as well. I think they're going to start creating the other part of the development up here in the spring. So there's going to be housing right across from the school. Some people's going to jump at that, I think. They'll be prime lots. We're headed in the right direction. Just, the interstate's going to bring these people and you can drive to jump. Just the interstate is going to bring these people, and you can drive, jump on that interstate and be over to Iowa City quicker than if you could have lived in Iowa City. That's one of the advantages of the interstate. And it's getting better. It's going to be eventually six lanes all the way to Davenport. So that will also help.
I view I-80 as a blessing. There are millions of people that drive past our town every year. It's our job as a city to attract a handful of those to make it a part, make them a part of our community. One idea that was brought to my attention over the last couple of days of talking with people is the area just west of the new Lynch development property. It's visible right on interstate. And I'm not saying a gas station, because those have just passed by. What I'm thinking is strip mall, small offices where local insurance people, consultants, engineers can have a small office that's visible from the interstate and keep their overhead low. So if we capture the traffic, it's a blessing. If we continue to use it as we do and just let people pass by by pumping gas, then it does the city, yes, if we get the taxes off the gas stations. But does that really help our community overall in attracting people to our community? So an idea that was brought to me, and I thought it was a good idea to bring to the table, is possibly a second area where you have, just like I said, smaller shops, clothing department. You name it, we can bring it if we just promote it. Because we have millions of people driving past here, it's our job to attract it.
I've lived in West Branch long enough to remember what it was like when we didn't have Interstate 80. And it's kind of a two-edged sword in a way. The traffic volume is so much heavier now than it was 10, 20, or 30 years ago when the cars and trucks, I remember being on the fire department and there'd be an accident. You could go out on the interstate, hold up your hand and stop the cars and kind of go about your business, get the wrecks cleared off. But now, if you tried that, in about 30 seconds, they'd be back third to Oxford. But we're also fortunate in West Branch that we have a good local road. So local commuters, if they don't want to be involved in the hustle and bustle of the interstate, they can take the local road to work. With the volume of traffic out there, I shy away from using it any more than I have to. But all the economic pluses that it's brought to the West Branch community, it's hard to say that it's not a blessing.
I view Interstate 80 as a definite blessing. I think it really, it's a highway, but it's so close to West Branch that, you know, families can come to West Branch and still, maybe they work in Davenport, maybe they work in Cedar Rapids, you know. But, you know, if you have one working one, one working the other, this is a nice happy medium. So, you know, it kind of feeds into wanting to grow the community. I think the location of West Branch is great because the Interstate 80 is essentially is an asset to allow families to move into our community. But still, you know, if they need to get somewhere quick, or if they have to go work elsewhere, that, you know, they're not driving 20 miles to get to Interstate 80. So I think it is an asset and it really, you know, it's going to give families a better opportunity to come into our town and build their own life and their family. So, yeah, I think it's a good thing.
All right, the next question goes to Dick. And this is concerning police and future policy. Do you think we have enough policemen in town? Do we need more? Do we need less? And what are your thoughts on traffic cameras?
I think we've got one of the best police departments that we have since I've been here. When we got this new police chief, everything turned around. He needs one more officer, I feel, to be able to give 24-hour-a-day coverage. And with the traffic we talked about on the interstate and different things, it makes the town safer. We do have the park. There are people coming in there. Nobody's mentioned the park tonight, but what they do for the town. And I think we should have... The police chief is real fine. He's got, the officers he's got are very top-notch. They speak to you, they walk around and make you feel safe. That's part of the community there. So I would like to see him to get that. They applied for a grant and they didn't get it. But I think we need to keep working on that, trying to get that grant, get that other officer so he can operate his business like he wants to.
With the police force, I feel that there's enough police officers on duty all the time. I've never felt unsafe. They do a magnificent job. My forehand, Lady Knight Group, has done a tremendous, tremendous work in helping bring out-of-town people back to the community. So I'm happy with them. I think three is enough. There's only 24 hours in a day. If you work an eight-hour shift, there's your 24 hours. Obviously, we're not patrolling 24/7, so we have ample coverage. The interstate, we're not really out there patrolling. I don't think that would be a city's job to patrol the interstate. That's what we have the Iowa State Patrol for. The use of traffic cameras, if the city has a desire to use them, if they feel that the traffic is not stopping, rolling through, speeding, that's a community decision. And that takes everybody's input. That's not a council person's decision. That would be something if the city stepped up and said, is the city for it or against it? Do we see a need to spend the money to invest in traffic cameras? So my stance would be no, I don't see any issues with the traffic flow or anyone within the community being unsafe, not having traffic cameras.
I think in my experience, living in West Branch, going back, and watched the police department, so watched the police force evolve from actually a town marshal. It's inevitable that we're going to have to eventually have more people. And one of the reasons that I think that is, as our officers gain seniority and they've been with us a long time, they gain more vacation time and that type of thing. So I think a three-man police force probably is going to be a thing of the past because you can't provide 24-hour, seven-day-a-week coverage and have your officers go on sick leave, go on vacation. It's not possible. I've talked to the county sheriff about it. And I realize we're getting, we're probably getting along pretty good right now. But eventually, we're not... The county sheriff told me that it's not possible to provide 24-hour coverage, seven days a week, unless you have a minimum of five officers. So, you know, eventually, it's going to have to happen. So no matter how hard we would like to think that we have peace and quiet here all the time, we may not. When you talk to the officers about things that go on that we don't even hear about, I think it's just inevitable that we're going to have to have more members that are in the department.
I think right now, our police force, they do a fantastic job, first of all. I want to salute them. They do a phenomenal job of taking care of our city and, you know, keeping the speed down, patrolling neighborhoods. I think right now, where we sit as a city, I think we have ample, I think, I feel very safe. I don't feel we're in need of additional officers. However, as we're all speaking of here at growth, I think we are going to need officers in the future. I think there is a definite need, as we grow as a community, to, you know, to provide more officers. As Jim said, yes, they deserve vacations, you know, they're people too, they have families. And, you know, it's not fair to them that, hey, you know what, you don't get to take a day off. Well, I don't think that's right. So, yeah, I think we will need officers, more officers in the future. As far as the camera, I mean, if we get more officers, we should need a camera. I mean, I don't, I don't, I think, I think we could find other ways to spend our money. But again, I think that's something that should be spoke, you know, talked about with the community, to see what their views are. And I mean, I think if somebody can come up and give you an idea and think, well, you know, I didn't look at it that way. But yeah, that's a good point. Maybe we should have cameras. So I think, you know, as of right now, I like where we sit as far as our police force and the cameras. But I'm definitely open to change. I think we all have to be as a community, especially for looking to grow, so...
I would definitely like to continue, you know, as everyone else has, just really commending the police force that we have. The chief seems like he's really just doing a great job. I like this kind of emphasis on community policing. I think that's just a really great model, and I'm glad that we're using that. You know, as far as whether or not we need to have more police on staff, I'd like to see a pretty thorough needs assessment. You know, what is it that, is it the coverage, is it, you know, the 24-hour coverage? Is that the main thing that we're missing? Or are there other gaps in services that we need to be providing as a community? Is it something that we need right now? Is it something that we need to be thinking about once we reach some tipping point of additional folks moving into the community? So I, you know, if whatever decision is made, I would really like to just see a pretty in-depth assessment done of what we have, what we need, and where the gaps are. As far as traffic cameras, I'm a little bit on the fence with them. I'm not convinced that they're out there for safety. I think they're probably out there for revenue generation. I mean, I'm just not convinced that it's a safety issue 100%. And, you know, I just think they're, I don't know, if you're looking to traffic cameras to help generate revenue, I just don't know if that's really the best model. So I'm pretty cautious about that. I don't, I would not necessarily want it, I'm not gung-ho like, okay, yeah, let's get one. I'm definitely not going to take that approach, so...
Goes back to Corey. It looks like we have time for one more question, if you're all really, really brief. All right.
True.
I know it's going to be hard to do. Well, as you know, the school budget and the city budgets are two separate entities, two separate stacks of money. So my question to you is, is it ever appropriate for the city to go in and help the school on certain projects? Is that something philosophically that you disagree with? Or do you think there are occasions when that needs to happen?
So the question is, do I see the school and city working together? Absolutely. We need the school system and the city to work together for the betterment of both. Right now, the school talk is, you know, are they in need of new facilities? You know, if they're in need of new facilities, they can work with the city. Where do you see your growth, or where can we grow together to benefit the community? So as far as keeping, I would say, keeping the dollars separate, but we have to work together to achieve the ultimate goal in providing the best town to live in, the best school systems to go to school, and create that community feel where the relationship between the school and the city has to be a positive. I think as of late, I think we're doing a pretty good job of working together. I won't necessarily say it's going great. But with my relationships with people throughout the school system, I would like to be a positive and have a positive impact in working with them for the betterment of our future, of our kids, of our town.
I think my past experience, we've had a more than adequate working relationship with the school. In fact, I think it's been really fantastic because I can remember twice that when I worked for the city that we needed to acquire some land, additional land to expand our utilities, like our water treatment plant, that type of thing. Actually, the land where our city library is used to belong with the school. So I think there are times when we can scratch each other's backs and make things work more harmoniously because it's just, it's just the way things ought to be. I really think that a whole lot more positive things happen when the two bodies work together.
Yeah, I agree wholeheartedly. I think, you know, if the school comes to us and they're in their need of some money or resources, by all means, we should help them out. I mean, we are a small community. We're not, you know, we know our neighbors, we know the kids' teachers, we know each other. So why, yeah, by all means, I think we should help out. And, you know, we're not just helping as well, we're helping out our future, you know. And that's really important to me. I want, you know, it's the future. It's what West Branch is going to be in 20, 30 years. So, you know, a little bit here, a little bit there, yeah, I think by all means, we should be open to helping the school out in any way that we can.
Yeah, I definitely would agree with that. I think the school, obviously, is a backbone of the community. People move to West Branch because they want to be a part of the school district. And to be able to say that, I think it's, that's just really important. And I'll give an example, you know, recently, the stop sign that was put in on Main Street, you know, that was really a product of hearing feedback from the school board and from folks that are part of the schools, saying, this is something that we really need. And so that was, that was something where I felt very confident in voting for that because we had that input from the schools. And that was something that, you know, the city put in, you know, contributed the cost to that stop sign and to the, you know, accompanying signs and things like that. So those are the kinds of partnerships and, you know, relationships I think are really essential. So I definitely think that finding ways to help one another is critical.
Yeah, I definitely think the school and the city needs to work together. They've had several projects this summer, I think, making the one-way street into the middle school and different things, sidewalks up through the back. There's going to be trails coming up pretty quick. And I think we've put some pretty good money in to help you guys towards these projects. And well, in the future, we need to be a friend of yours because we need to get the library ground from you.
We'll work together.
That's why we got to work together, whatever way we can. But so far, you people have been very good and got along real good. There's going to be some things straightened out, I think, in the future. When this new addition gets created next spring, there's going to have to be some real meetings between the school and the city on how they're going to make that road there at that intersection work right. It's going to probably have to be three lanes or four or something. So there's all kinds of possibilities of things that we need to work the school with.
Okay, with that answered, we're at 8:33, so that means my job is done. Now it's time for Alyssa and Jeff.
So we will draw our West Branch City Council candidate forum to a close. But before we excuse you, we'd like to again thank the candidates for coming and participating so that the voters can be better informed. And we wish each of you the very best of luck in your campaign.
We would all, again, like to acknowledge the Brick Arch Winery and the West Branch Times for co-sponsoring the forum.
Other thank yous go out to the video team members Nick Schimmern and Neil Crone, West Branch staff Clarkini, Amanda Hughes, and Doug Cummings, question committee members Mike Owens, Julie Bridges, Sally Peck, Kevin Hatfield, and Wayne Owen Holt, moderator David Johnson, and to Janie for pulling you through tonight.
And to you, Julia. Thank you. For those of you who joined us tonight, and for those of you who will be viewing this forum later on, later on West Branch Community Access, WBCA. later on West Branch Community Access, WBCATV, Channel 5, we hope you found this forum educational and feel better prepared for the November 5th election. Thank you and good night.